Thank you for joining us. This is the zoning board of adjustments and appeals, May 2nd. First order of business is roll call. Ms. Tesmer?
Here.
Ms. Farrell?
Here.
Ms. Mayweather?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Mr. Branner is not here, but is expected to attend. And Ms. Koenishi is here. We have before us, we have the meeting minutes from our previous meeting from April.
What to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
And Ms. Koenishi, yes. I will turn it over to the city attorney.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustments and appeals. This is a board comprised of members of our community. They are appointed by our city commission to serve on the board. They are not city employees and they are tasked with listening to requests for variances from our city's land development code and granting a request for such a variance where literal enforcement of the code would create an undue burden or unnecessary hardship and where granting that variance would not be contrary to public interest. The way the procedures will work this morning, the chair will call each applicant forward if you can state your name and also just give a brief request of what you are, what your variance entails. And then the board will be able to ask any questions. If there are any members of the community that are here to speak for or against a particular variance, they'll be given an opportunity to speak as well, as well as city staff in presenting any additional information. I would ask if any of you are planning to speak before our board this morning, if you could stand at this time and I can go ahead and swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Turn it back over to our chair. Thank you. Our first applicant this morning is for 301 Alamanda Drive. This is a request for an eight-foot-six-inch variance to allow a rear setback of six-foot-six-inch in lieu of the required 15-foot minimum setback for principal structures specified by table 3.4-1 in the land development code to allow for the construction of a two-story addition with a carport, utility room, and a second-floor master suite in the rear yard of the property located at 301 Alamanda Drive. This was continued from last month's meeting. Can you state your name and address, please?
Good morning. My name is Clayton Gah and my address is 301 Alamanda Drive.
Thank you. Can you give us a little bit of description of your...
Yes, so that was what I was going to read. And so essentially what we're looking to do is I have a carport which is built, it's, I guess, really on the side of my house. We use it as the front of our house. And that carport, I believe, was built in about the 1970s. It's bad. It needs to come down. Essentially, what we would like to do is replace it and move it forward. And then along with replacing it and moving it forward, we want to go up. And that would allow for us to make a master bedroom suite above that carport, connect it to our house, connect the entire unit to our house. At present, it's usually, it's really standalone. That carport houses our laundry room in it as well and the back utility room. We would like to be able to move that to the inside of our house. The beams on the carport are sagging very badly. There's an aluminum roof on it that has holes and is rotted away. And there is a concrete cinder block wall that stands about four feet high where the current variance runs, where the carport is. And that is loose. It needs to come down. It's just not safe and I've got two new little kids. So, yeah, that's essentially what it is we're looking to do. I'm not getting any closer to any property line with regards to my neighbors. We are getting closer to the street. So other than that, we're not changing any distance between where we currently are, between ourselves and our neighbors. And they like the idea. I've chatted with them, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning. Demarystole, Senior Planner at Community Economic Development. This property is located at 301 Alamanda Drive. It is zoned RA3 in the urban neighborhood context district. This variance is for eight-foot-six-inch to allow for a six-foot-six-inch rear setback in lieu of the required 15 minimum setback for the principal structure as specified in table 3.4-1 of the land development code. The subject property is a corner lot. As you can see here, it's on the corner of Troy and Alamanda Drive. And according to property appraisers, the home was built back in the 1920s, so 1929 home. And then the detached carport utility was added in 1977. So, let's see here. This here is a couple of images of the property. This is the front of the home. And this is the side here. You can see is the, the, excuse me, the side yard there. And then this is the existing driveway with the carport. And you can see in the rear there, the utility room. And there's a little closer look of the utility room and carport. And then the, the distance between the carport and the adjoining car property. This here is the site plan of the proposed layout. As you can see, it will be a attached carport with the addition, the two-story addition for the second-floor master suite. And the applicant's justification for this pertains to the lack of space in the rear yard and the design layout, the orientation of the existing home since it was built in 1929. The detached carports and utility could be reconstructed to the side, east side of the existing home, but that would, that would require the driveway to be relocated. And, and so the more logical choice and layout position of the rooms would be to keep the home, the carport and the driveway where it's currently located. The proposed two-story addition will be constructed to match the architectural design and finishings of the materials of the existing home so that we, you know, show a very smooth transition to the, to the existing structure. To account for the five-foot-wide utility easement which runs parallel to the rear yard as you can see here, the applicant actually redesigned the structure to reduce the footprint of that and by 18 inches to ensure that there's no encroachment into the easement. The adjacent single-family home to the south located at 2514 Troy Avenue was also constructed, was actually constructed in 1950, has the orientation very similar to this home which faces west towards Troy Avenue. Just like the subject property, the rear yard is, is very minimum due to the orientation of the home. And so the, essentially their, their side yard is their rear yard in the traditional sense. And so the, the proposed request is justified. The hardship suffered is no action, no result in action taken by the applicant. The request is reasonable and proportioned to the degree of hardships offered by the applicant. And the approval of this request would not be contrary to public interests and minimum impact to the adjacent properties to the south. So the, whoops. So staff recommends the approval of, considered for approval for this request.
Marys, did you receive any correspondence from the neighbors?
I did not. No, I didn't receive, no emails, no phone calls for this property.
Are we looking at the addition?
You're looking at it from Troy Avenue right now.
So you'll be looking to the east?
The west elevation is like the front of your house, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that, the far left over there is an unfinished enclosed porch. It's actually finished and enclosed before I moved in. But that's the entryway from Alamandra. We don't use that side of the house. My office is in there.
Yes, the mayor's just trying to articulate the house to the south as a separate orientation. So it's really more of a situation of side yard to side yard, not really backyard to backyard here. I think the aerial should bring it up. You can sort of get a sense how close the house to the south is. And they have a driveway on Troy Avenue as well.
Their driveway is directly next to mine.
Correct, yeah. Do you want to show the aerial, Demarys?
Yes. Whoops. Was it like that?
Yeah, the property to the south, you can see the carport there they have attached on the north side and the driveway there. So they're about maybe, I'd say probably approximately 10 feet from the, from the north line.
Okay. So your driveway stays in the same spot that it's at now?
Correct.
So the footprint is almost the same as what you actually had now?
It's almost identical. It's being moved forward. Where the utility sits now will be grass. And then the utility will move forward underneath the current carport. So it's, it's going to give us more room in the backyard. It's just, it's definitely the best situation.
And they didn't have any objections?
No, no. I've talked to both my neighbors. They're both great people.
Just out of curiosity, are there, are there windows on the side that's going to be facing your neighbor that...
There are, and I forget the name of what those windows are called, but they're the kind that are above your eye line. So they're just going to be letting in the sun from that side as they pass. So I'm not going to have a view into their backyard.
Yeah. As a neighbor, that would have been my concern, but this, we're not here to discuss that anyway. I was just curious.
Move to it, huh?
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Branner?
Yes.
And Ms. Koenishi, yes. Approved.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Have a great day.
Thanks you too. Our next applicant is 2428 Hollingsworth Hill Avenue. This request is for a two-foot variance to allow a maximum fence height of eight feet in lieu of the maximum height of six feet for residential fences and walls specified by figure 4.4-1 of the land development code in order to construct an eight-foot-high fence in the rear yard area along the north and south interior side, property lines for a distance of approximately 68.25 feet and along the rear property line on the property located at 2428 Hollingsworth Avenue. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Shannon Kelso. I'm the homeowner of 2428 Hollingsworth Hill Avenue. Thanks for having me and just wanted to request a two-foot variance on our existing five-to-nine foot fence. Due to elevation issues, we lack privacy in our backyard. And the elevation difference is one foot, however, the adjacent property is much higher than one foot. So in the direct line of vision, we could see directly into their home and they can see directly into ours. So just requesting to replace that, those fences with an eight-foot fence.
Good morning.
Good morning. Todd Vargo with Planning and Zoning, I'm sorry, Community and Economic Development, Planning and Zoning. The subject property here is 2428 Hollingsworth Hill Avenue. You can see it's, it and the two properties to the south are a little bit extended. The properties to the north are how this was originally plotted with these being a little shorter than the ones to the east. But then when we get to 2428 and then the two south, these ones are longer and these ones are shorter. So this is part of the reason, the, why we're recommending approval, but I'm getting ahead of myself. Here's the site plan as provided by the applicant. And you can see the house that was constructed in 1968 here in the front. This is Hollingsworth Hill Avenue. This is the rear yard with the pool. And this is where the proposed eight-foot fences will go along the entire rear yard and then 68.25 feet of the north property line and the south property line, just again in order to give the, some privacy to the pool area. Here is standing at the back of their driveway looking to the east. And actually, you can see pretty well, there's the pool. There's the pool on the right-hand side. And there's an existing eight-foot fence along this side. Here's the eastern or the rear property line with a six-foot fence along it. And then on this side is the north side and there is a five-foot chain link fence right now hidden by that shrubs, but you'll be able to see it in another picture. And you can see how, you know, even, even with the five-foot fence and these shrubs are about six foot tall, you can still see into the, into the rear yard. From the aerial photo, this house back here is a lot closer than it normally would be. I can go back and show you that real quick.
It's about probably 20 feet from the...
Yeah, it's, it's pretty close to that property line. And while this is a six-foot fence with some hedges that have grown above it, the hedges don't belong to the property, to our property owner. You know, these people could take those hedges down at any time and then they would also be looking out into the pool area. The next, looking southwards again towards the pool, you can see the existing eight-foot fence provides a nice barrier. And again, they just want to replace this one, add an eight-foot fence to the east property line and then to the north property line as well. And then this is, so the pool is off to the right again. Here is the fence on the east property line with those hedges. Here's the hedges and the five-foot chain link fence. I think it's just along here that they want to replace though with the six-foot, oh, I'm sorry, with the eight-foot fence. And again, you can see where this house here has some views into the backyard and to the And again, here's, here again is the, the boundary survey. So we, there is a slight elevation difference and I wish I had included the topographic map that was given to us on this property. Of course, the topographic map doesn't show us anything on the neighboring properties, but, but according to the testimony, there's a difference in property, in elevation of the neighboring properties. So based on our site visit and the testimony, we recommend approval. We don't, we don't think this is any hardship, that is not, this, any hardship is, is not a result of any action taken by the applicant. We believe the eight-foot fence is reasonable and proportionate to the degree of hardship resulting from the unusual parcel configuration and proximity of the swimming pool to adjacent properties. We have received one email from a property owner that was noticed and they recommend approval. They agree with the variance. And if there's no objections from any of the adjoining property owners, we recommend approval.
Todd, which, which neighbor did you receive a letter from?
It was actually, again, it was somebody that we noticed. I think they were across the street, so it wasn't anybody...
Took any impact?
I think it was this gentleman right here.
Okay. But the other three neighbors that would be impacted, you did not receive any?
No.
Okay.
No, and they would have been noticed.
Can you go back to that image with the, the playhouse structure?
This one?
Yes. There was actually, there's another one that's a little bit, that one. It looks to me like, and maybe it's just an illusion of the lighting or the image, but it looks like that property is sloping to the north. Is that correct?
Correct. That's slipping down towards like Hollingsworth there.
Yeah.
And you can see the hedge line that the neighbor to the west has. I mean, that does obviously provide an equal buffer, but that unfortunately is not under the control of the...
Right. And if they decided to remove that...
Correct.
Right.
It's similar to the, the one to the, the south there on the right side.
Mm-hmm. The one to the south, is that your fence or is that the neighbor's fence?
That is our fence.
That's your fence.
And those neighbors, I've actually never even met before, but I tracked down who lived there through the builder, Philip Olivera, and I just cold called them and introduced myself and discussed our plans and they had no objection and verbally said that'd be okay with us. And even though I hadn't met them, I just wanted to make sure.
So are you the original property owner that installed the eight-foot and then the six-foot fence?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. That's different.
And back to what Todd was trying to, just actually to do it earlier, this property in the two to the south, the, the rear yard is actually about the, it's like the eastern, I guess, the western 68 feet of the subdivision to the east. It's kind of unusual. That's why you had the situation where the, this lot is much deeper than the one to the north and that, that part of their backyard that runs parallel to the, the house to the northeast, which is obviously on the opposite street, you know, to the, over there. So that's a kind of unusual circumstance.
Any other questions, really, for me? Motion to approve? We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Sherret?
Yes.
Mr. Branner?
Yes.
And Ms. Koenishi, yes. It's approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next applicant is 2313 Coventry Avenue. This request is for a five-foot, I'm sorry, a 15-foot variance to allow a minimum lot frontage of 60 feet in lieu of the 75-foot minimum specified by subsection 4.11.4.6B.3 of the land development code in order to construct a new circular driveway addition on property located at 2313 Coventry Avenue. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Mike Childress. I'm with Mike's Concrete. And I'm doing a job for Melissa McIntosh at 2313. And she has an existing driveway that goes along the north side of the property. And so now what I'm trying to do is put a circular drive in. And I've been doing a lot of driveways in the area for many years, but I didn't realize that this, I don't want to say new, but I want to say that the 65, or 60-foot or better to get this put in for, for her has, has come to everyone's attention that it's supposed to be a 60, a 75-foot or more. And what I've got there now is just the issue with her backing out. She's had several close calls with, I guess, the landscape and lawn trailers come park right in front of her house. And so she's had a couple of close calls coming out. And so I'm just here to see if I can put a circular drive in there for, for that reason, plus the fact of it gets her closer to her front door on the property. And right now, she's got a tenant in the back and I know that's not an issue, but they have a cir, a single drive going to the back. So she has to keep that clear the whole time for them to have access in and out. So it would just make everything a lot easier for her. She had something in the front yard to get. And so she just wanted me to try to come down and see if I could install this. It's on a 62-foot lot, I believe it is, her lot, 62. And there's a few down the street. She's, she's telling me they've got them down the street. They look fine. They're, you know, within, but, but she wants to put it in to her driveway to try to, you know, make things safer and more convenient for her.
Hi, good morning. I'm Philip Scares, Principal Planner at Community Economic Development. As Mr. Childress stated, this is a, like I said, a request for, to install a circular driveway on a lot that is less than 75 feet. Up until 2019, circular driveway would probably been, would have been approved, but the, the codes were changed in 2019. The city had commissioned, adopted an amendment to Article 4 of the land development code to address standards on, on parking in driveways and established a new minimum lot frontage for, for circular driveways, which is 75 feet. The subject property is located within the Cleveland Heights Unit 1 subdivision and consists of a 60-by-120 interior lot with a, just about 2,200 square foot, single-family detached home that was built in 1970 according to the property appraiser. The zoning is single-family, R1A, and is located within the urban neighborhood. Coventry Avenue is a bricked paved local street which runs east, which runs north-south from Edgewood Drive to Lake Hollingsworth Drive. I'm just going to show you some pictures here. Again, Mr. Childress had started the work and was informed that he needed a permit. And when he came to our department, we told him that, you know, this, the lot was substandard in width and just, you know, the course of action would be, would be the variance. So that's why we're here today. This is looking west into the subject property. Again, looking west, this is where the driveway would, would come out onto Coventry. And this is looking southwest towards the, the neighbor's lot as well. And there, as Mr. Childress said, there are quite a few other circular driveways on, on this, on Coventry, and we'll go over that in a minute here. This is looking north towards Lake Hollingsworth. You definitely tell the, the slope of the road. And generally, a narrow brick paved road would, would, would be, have a traffic calming effect. But when you're going, you know, north towards Lake Hollingsworth and it's downhill, you kind of let that, you kind of let that go a little bit. And, and if you don't remember, last month, there was another case on Coventry Avenue for a fence. When I was out taking pictures for that, I was surprised how many cars park on the road. There, there's a lot of, a lot of cars parked on the street. With that slope going downhill, there is, there are sightline concerns as we'll see here in a second. With the exception of, of our city van parked here, you can see down the road here, there are, there are cars parked along, along Coventry. And it's, it's a common occurrence. And as Mr. Childress said, you know, you have landscaping, van, you have trailers and thing, and the like. And this is the applicant's property right here. I just walked up the street, just took a picture down the hill. And again, so we're going to should look at some of the examples of some of the existing circular driveways on Coventry. And, uh, again, so we're going to, should look at some of the examples of some of the existing circular driveways on Coventry. This is one, uh, just within, just again, just within the immediate area. I was just, we were just walking up and down the street. Here's another one. Granted, it's on a little bit wider lot, but it is a circular driveway. This is a couple, um, houses to the south. And this is a proposed, proposed site plan. This is the existing current condition here. Uh, and then this is, would be the, the circular driveway as proposed in the site plan here. Just going to back up and I'll read my recommendation. Make sure I didn't forget anything. Yeah, and, and, uh, as Mi- Mr. Lyons and I were there doing a site visit, um, we, we did just talk to one of the neighbors, uh, that came out. And he was, uh, the, the applicant's next-door neighbor and he was all for the variance. Uh, but I did not receive any calls, uh, or emails, uh, for against. But again, while we were there, um, taking, taking pictures, the, the neighbor did, said he was all for the variance because he said it is a, you know, difficult situation backing out. And the recommendation, the initiation of the work of the driveway without, without a permit, while, uh, while an economic hardship is not sufficient justification, um, for granted variance. The volume of speed and traffic along the roadway, presence of vehicles parked within the roadway and the elevation of the homes of the side street, however, suggests that the owner of the property has legitimate safety concerns uh, significant enough to justify the variance. The requested variance, uh, relief is reasonable. It would not be contrary to the public entrance as there are multiple examples of non-conforming circular driveways along Coventry Avenue. Provided there are no substantive objections from any adjacent property owners, staff has no objections to granting the variance from the frontage requirement. However, many of the existing circular driveways also encroach into the right-of-way for Coventry Avenue, which is expressly prohibited by our Land Development Code. Uh, to meet the spirit and intent of the Land Development Code, staff recommends that the, as a condition of approval, that's a circular driveway addition, with the exception of new driveway apron, be located entirely within the project boundary. And that just means that the circular portion of the driveway here, just that being on the applicant's property and not within, within the right-of-way. There's a different right-of-way along Coventry, so.
Yeah, but you could go on the aerial, some of the older examples, about half the driveway is actually within the right-of-way.
Yeah.
I spoke with Phil Hard and Puppa Burson, indicated that, that that's not permitted. They're, they're only allowed to have the apron, um, you know, thing like in the right-of-way. So, um, if you approve this, we would, um, condition that upon that the circular driveway extension portion itself be located out, uh, the right-of-way.
Yeah, all along that.
On your, on your photos, I think one of them was in the right-of-way and one of them was not, correct?
The examples?
Yeah, on the examples, that, like, that one is in the right, the apron, right?
If you go to the aerial, I think you could see a little bit better, better view, if you go back.
You go back to aerial?
Yeah. Yeah, so that one to the, um, north there, um, on the right side, go up, up for, that, go further north. That one, no, north, north, top of the page.
Ah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that one, that one, I have, I have that driveway is actually in the, the right-of-way.
So, right-of-way.
So that's what we're trying to avoid is where they, because at some point, the city may want to put in the sidewalk and.
Right.
Or, or do other work within there, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm assuming there will be landscape going in and not just?
Yes, ma'am. There'll be sod and landscape going the whole, the whole distance across the front.
Okay, and have you, have you confirmed, um, that you'd be able to do the extension without crutching any further layer into the right-of-way? Because I know, um, Coventry is about sixty feet wide of the right-of-way, which means the property line is approximately twenty feet from the curb there. So that means, um, the extra circular portion, you'd need to be at least twenty feet back from the curb. Have you, have you verified that?
Yes, uh, when I measured, uh, I come up with sixty-two, but I mean, it's, it's sixty-two or sixty. But what I'm doing is staying three foot from the property line, starting my wing, and then, I'm sorry, going up around to my curb.
Okay.
So I, I am staying, uh, the whole driveway, every bit of the driveway, even the flare, will be three foot grass between.
But with the exception of the apron, the actual circular portion, that'll be on the homeowner's property and will not be in the right-of-way.
Right.
Yeah, all this, all this area here would need to be on the property. And then obviously the flare in, in the right-of-way. But this portion, the, the circular portion needs to be all on the property?
Yeah, every single bit of it. Even, even the flare down there is three foot off the property line.
Right.
Yes, that circular part is definitely, probably, uh, it's going to be at least five to six feet where the, where that is. None of that will be close. The reason being, there's a big, there's a great big box there for the phone company. So I, that's why I originally called him out to check this out. So I wanted to see if I could, you know, put it next, right next to the phone box.
Box.
The phone box right in there, you're right on it. That's it. So even with that box, there's still a three-foot area between the furthest part of my concrete and her property line.
How much distance is there from Coventry to the front property line? Did you say?
About twenty feet from the, from the curb to the front property line.
Currently?
Yes.
Look at the photo, it doesn't look like there's a lot of space there. I was asking.
So currently, as you mentioned, she has a tenant in the back. So she pulls over in her grass area now, just?
Yes, ma'am. If you can see up there where, um, the existing driveway is a long driveway on this, on the north side, that, that whole area, there's a, there's a, a structure in the back and she has a tenant back there. So what I'm, my, my issue was just saying that if she could somehow keep that clear for the tenant in the back, she's at, you can see she's having to park. The other, other one showed, the other picture showed the, the car kind of halfway in between her front door. So she just wanted to have access to that front door and be able, you know, be able to walk in with groceries and stuff instead of having to park, you know, they're all, you know, kind of crazy, just to let that tenant in the back.
I hear what you're saying, but there is really no front door. It's the pool.
Pool, right, yeah, pool, yeah. But it's, that's her.
It's not closer to the door, is it? It's closer.
Yes, sir.
That's what you're saying.
But those steps are leading up to the?
Pool.
Pool.
Which goes to the front door.
Okay.
Look, see, they're right there where she's kind of parked. This is her husband's car, I believe. And so they're having to park like cockeyed there to, to, to let the neighbor go by and the tenant in the back to go by them so they can get through. So she wants me to put something along here. And then the issue of the, you know, if we're going to go park it, put a parking path here, can we just go to the road with it? And like I said, uh, when I went down a few houses, like, uh, the brick paver house, uh, the brick paver, one that was down there, it had, uh, the same exact measurement lengthwise. And what I've done up here is, if you can see, it's, it is a twenty-foot because if you can tell the, the property, uh, easement is right at the back of the white vehicle there, yeah? And so that's twenty foot up. And I was just going to do the same exact thing on this side. And even with my wings, I'm still three foot from, and I've taken my truck, her car, and we've driven through just to see if it would work right. And she had no problem, I had no problem with a, a medium-sized truck.
It does not like, look like thirty-two feet. It does not look like thirty-two. Have a color more like.
Those are different. That one's definitely less. This is the one that she looked at and thought, this is what I want. You know, she's pointing this driveway out to me. Can I do this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Tesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Mayweather?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrett?
Yes.
And Mr. Bronner?
Yes.
And Ms. Koenishi, yes. Approved.
We sure appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business?
Just want to, um, announce that today is, um, this convention is our last meeting here with us here. Has it already been six years? I can't, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, it's been six years.
Um, so we definitely, we appreciate your service, um, on the board and we wish you the best. And maybe on some point in the future, you'll be able to come back and rejoin us.
I would definitely enjoy that. Or multiple other city boards.
Other boards, yes.
I'm considering.
We've yet to wait three years before being, being considered, but.
Well, as a request, I would like to have, um, our planners come and join us and get a picture of everybody. This is my last day.
Sure.
If y'all don't mind.
Yes.
Do we have to adjourn the meeting first?
Yes, that would be probably.
All right. We are adjourned.